Everybody. Welcome to our march.
Dan, is it okay that there's a white screen there again?
Just. Alright, so we'll call our meeting to order at seven oh three. We'll say something to the teenager. Um.
We'll get out early.
There you go.
Okay, so um. First order of business is to adopt the agenda. I do want to make a note um that we do have a little bit of a change. We want to be in there that items um which is the we were planning to have a details discussion on the national plan next steps. However, the committee was not able to use uh investment in us. So I don't really make sense during the. So we may actually. And he will. And already agreed here. So she was trying to do that song back.
I right now um I think what I was gonna try is I have a timer. I found a website that does this. And when it gets to like one minute left, I can say one minute left. Does that sound good?
Sure.
We can try it.
Alright, so um motion to adopt the uh agenda.
I'm moved to adopt you then.
And Sarah's first and now a favor. Next up is the February minutes. If anything, uh any, but I guess we make a motion first. Make a motion first.
Now I move to accept the minutes.
Thanks for that for the second. Okay, any discussion on the uh minutes? Questions, reflections? See them all favor. Okay. Next up is the planning calendar, and I have to apologize because I did not publish this many months. I'm kind of in, I I think it was in my mind. I spent like two weeks, ran back in my house looking for DVDs for the um uh CPR class. Just looking everywhere. I I knew the three places you could compete, looked everywhere, uh looked in all the most bizarre places eventually.
When you look in the freezer, you know you're crazy.
I'm gonna red folder label the H A C P R in my token of training this year. It's similarly, I thought I had already done this two weeks ago, and I had one more today. Hi colleagues, there really wasn't anything new on the calendar, but just. So uh not much new than last month, but essentially the same thing. But uh basically what we have coming up um is uh this month. We are, we start from one scholarship. We have the Easter party coming up in April. We have our annual meeting, which we agreed to have on sixteen four P M. Blood drug happening in April. That's all set volunteers and everything. Oh, great. Uh National Library. And then the um early school on this day, uh we doing some having a table there. And some of the camp plan will be giving with people beginning with. Alright, so. And then maybe we'll have to be selecting our scholarship winner. Uh and there was a question about whether ten to forty bodies were going to go up to different work early and floor to accommodate. If we can get them up, that would be great. This will last season on June third, so we can have another for them.
I'm sorry, when does it have to be before?
Uh June third.
I can get the four bodies set up. Although I don't think we need to get four bodies, we can probably wait until much beginning or. Or at the end of June. Cause they can just have an access to their community room.
Okay, so that was all I had to to mention on the planning calendar. So moving on, so per our training last month, um I did make a few changes to the structure of the agenda um based on some other recommendations, so just to have the more substantive part of the discussion moved earlier when we're all showing engagement.
Theoretically.
And then move some of the more uh voting later on. So that's what we did. So we have a discussion section next. Uh as I mentioned, the main part of that right now is it was maybe delaying. So the first thing that we want to talk about was the uh training sessions, a little briefing and talk about next steps. We we want to try. And then we also want to uh take some time to review and improve the New York State report we can provide it. So about the Patty Jordan. So I did send up, I did right now, I'm approaching everything I've done. I sent out materials, right? I sent out copies to you about the chair this person is. You didn't. Excellent, even better. Alright, um so one, I just wanted to let people comment on how they thought the trade was um, you know, general comments, anything that we, if any follow up, we want to do with either Judith or Mary on the items. And uh it's just in general, when people, people find it helpful.
I think it's only okay.
Sorry, I was just gonna say I found it helpful.
I think it's always helpful for us all to get together.
Yeah.
I didn't, I I was particularly the finance. I felt like we were just jumping through a hoop and checking off a box. It didn't feel it didn't even feel like she was all that like invested in what she was saying, like shifting, well, Tim wants me to say this. I would, you know, I just, I didn't, I I kind of was really disappointed.
That wasn't the feeling. I got financial.
Yeah.
I thought, I thought she was pretty thorough. Some of her recommendations were terrifying and expensive.
Yeah.
I don't know if we have the wherewithal to do a financial review, but that, you know, we certainly don't have the wherewithal to do an audit. I mean, cause that's very time consuming, etc.
But it was interesting to know that the financial review is really useful if you are going to try to get grants, which we are going to try to do.
Usually have to have.
Yeah.
Yeah, it is a big, it is a big um amount of money for us considering what our budget is. Yeah. And even if we were trying to do it in advance of like I mean four fourteen and then trying to prove out the. And that's a lot. It's like you can only just see that's making that then ask for maybe a bad amount. But yeah, you know, so um I was kind of, I guess I was less than we surprised, but also just really surprised that there wasn't more that we should be doing differently. Which is not against anybody, just like I, I feel like I'm surprised that we were so on top of most of the uh most of the I didn't you got the dog, you know? So that was, that was very good. Again, I didn't get out of it, but I don't know. No, I just thought like, oh, we're getting more, we're doing our ourselves, whatever. You can give your own votes, I mean, a lot of the recommendations. Um I think the reason financial, so probably we should be putting it out there.
Yeah, we need, I mean, they're available in QuickBooks. It's just a matter of getting it out there. Like a quarterly financial will not be a bad idea.
It is, it's also um some of the reports, I inherited some things that um like there's accounts that have totals of money that are closed. So it says we have like thirty five thousand dollars in one account and that account is closed. So there's things in here that needs to be updated. I just, I'm not gonna go in a rush. So um I figured we might just go through all of this and have him help look at it. So.
We can, we can certainly, you know, improve the product a little bit that we put out. It's just, you know, trying to work out everybody's schedule.
But it basically guided a forty month, uh it said like basically like ninety percent of what you would have wanted in something is we are providing.
Yeah, there's, there's just a sex and balance even there, so.
Um I thought there was uh, you know, I think we already know that we kind of struggled with this. Um sort of that separation of duties, because obviously there's absolutely no separation in some way. Although we try to have our checks and balances and all that, but um you know, we're always obviously not um following those best practices. The couple of things that she mentions, the two signatures on a check, one of whom isn't the bookkeeper. I don't know, like how the board members, I don't know how people felt about that. And then similarly, having um two board members review the reconciliation of the bank statements. I don't know, wait, is that something we feel like with them?
That's up to the board. I'm pretty comfortable with Quick, QuickBooks that you can go in at any time and see all the checks that have been written. And usually there's good documentation up there as to what they are. When I sign the checks, I make sure that the receipts are there, because Ken does an excellent job of providing those um for his payroll. Uh not here, you know, with a time clock or anything. I say, I think, I mean, I think because of the backup we have with QuickBooks. Uh I think that, and because all of our checks are written out of QuickBooks, I think that's certainly a very good way of, anybody could go in at any time if they had a question. Okay, how, what checks were, I did a run of all the checks that had been written since the first of the year. I did, uh just did that this morning. And that's where I came up with, you know, that we had spent set close to seventeen thousand. There was more than that that was spent, but that's just based upon the number of checks or direct deposit or direct withdrawals that have been made. So um I don't know what the transfer into the checking account. Out of, I don't think that's included in there.
Yeah.
I wouldn't think so. I mean, if if any board member wants to go into QuickBooks, we'll get more than happy to give them the passwords. And they can look, cause all the reports are right there. And I think that's certainly a transparency that I, you know, I have with the church, our treasurer for the church, and they all have the passwords. If they want to go into Berkshire Bank and look at that.
I think the other thing she was that I could always say out at the end of each month, I do reconciliation bank accounts and the, and then one of the credit cards, I mean reconciliation that. That always go out as a reporter. I have all the reports that are created based on what we, you know, so. If people wanted to see that, that would be also something that I can get just one more set of eyes on it. If that's a help, I don't know if anyone wants one after this, but they can at least be out there. Yeah, I mean, if there, if it's something that's already, you're already doing, so actually work is just posting it, and that might be good just for sake of saying it there. But you don't want to be. They're gonna trip to Hawaii.
I was go, I was going the other way, Spain, but you know. No, I think, I think I was pleased that she kind of did underline some of the things we're already doing.
Yeah.
You know.
Yeah.
I think maybe the impression you might have had uh that is that she wasn't taking it seriously.
No, it wasn't that. I just didn't feel like it was, I mean, we didn't get anything at the beginning that said, here's what we're gonna walk away knowing. We didn't walk away with a list of here's what you now know. It just, she continued to like go back and forth between, well, this is what the book says, and Tim says, this is, you know, okay with me, and I just, I I was disappointed.
Okay.
I I didn't um. And they also didn't ask for any feedback. They didn't give us any kind of a survey or.
We're each else's, we need actors, not particularly bad on hers. And I asked if she wanted more feedback or is my feedback, and she said just my feedback, so.
I I guess partly being a professional trainer. It was not just, especially the second one. I love Mary, so I'm jaded, you know, but um but even um that, I didn't feel like they were.
We have one left to talk about the training.
Okay, thank you. Yeah.
If the board agrees, would we like to extend that five more minutes since we have some time? Yeah. So I feel free to send me any other thoughts or any uh, you know, specific things to implement. I think we, it's good to know that we can, um we might want to have the, as we work on policies, the two other policies she mentioned, the credit card and that net system. Um she can give us example, so there's something that we should. Um clearly, anything in terms of, you know, it's interesting to get a perspective on four fourteen and the fact that they are moving toward encouraging people to do that on a regular basis, which makes sense to some degree to say that, so you're not going smaller tasks, you know, more getting smaller people instead of um going larger one, I think. It's simple to for people to follow. Um but that is gonna have to be an app for us to discuss that. Soon.
She want you send a handbook to us about that? She said there was a handbook about how to do that.
Yes. Okay, this might be more Jennifer issues here.
No.
Because I think she did send it, and I think I was confused when I sent it. But let me make a note, a new note to do so. Now, I am thoroughly. On the meetings, uh so we have made a few changes already based on um Mary's, what Mary had her best practice was. Um did folks have, I, I, one thing I thought would be helpful to do is, since it's already made for us, we don't do anything except philosophically, is the board meeting evaluation every meeting. Let's see how we're doing. That way we can see if we're feeling the meeting effective, if there's things we can improve. I want to take one, like two minutes of people so to do it, might as well, we would use that as a quick guide, see how we're doing on that. Um other thoughts on that portion? People have other thoughts on any suggestions or recommendations? Thanks, alright, for jumping in on time keeper. Um so we, we made the attempt to get the materials up all weekend advance.
Yes.
And then we had challenges. It include, it will be mother nature challenges.
For the most part, we did get everything up um except for financials.
So I think, I think, I, well, I, I think that's helpful. I think it's helpful to have it in advance. I'll ask others if they think that it's helpful to have it in advance. Or are we, are we not?
I do. I mean, I definitely read through everything, which I will admit I haven't always done. As a result of having it early. I thought it was helpful. I thought it was also helpful to have a deadline that was clear, clear and before the, you know, so we prefer the meeting rather than just sometime as soon as you can.
Yeah, I think a deadline is a good thing, a hard deadline. I still like read them at the same time I would normally, which was today. But if I read them three days ago, I wouldn't remember.
I think we should continue to try, try that and see if we can keep that going. I think that will help us. Um the other thing that we, she skipped over the exercise um during the training because we're running short on time. Um which was the Brown rules. Um I don't know if folks looked at those, had any thoughts on them, if we feel like we could without them. Um we can also have people come back with the ones that they think are affordable. When I tweeted, you know, need to adopt them then. Um I think we do pretty good, but it doesn't hurt, especially if we have many people coming on, you know, you have some stuff to, to be able to arrive. Did anybody already look at them and have thoughts? And they have, and they kind of. That was, I know, I had that stories. Folks, like we take this home and um give you about something.
Obvious. Yeah, I I would agree.
I just feel like if it isn't broke, let's fix it like.
So telling people how to behave is friends a little bit of precious.
I think there certainly been instances on this for not this present. But within the last year where there was a lot of off topic and harping, harping, harping on things. I I don't agree that it's always been so. We have one minute left.
But you know what? And that right there might help with that.
Sure.
Keeping time.
Yeah.
I'm not sure telling people.
It's like why you have process in place before. You know, it's created and it specifically to address one person. You kind of want to be like, this is the funny personally, but we have to have these rules.
Yeah, right. Could be, could be helpful in the future.
I would have a hard time just picking four or six. I mean, they all seem reasonable.
Right.
I mean, as Scott said, it's just like, you know, let's act like adults.
They're just not all and say this is our new program as well.
But I have a lot of dog stories.
I was just gonna say, I really like dog stories, so I don't know.
We are done with that section. Like a shaggy dog story, where you're just telling some, some random, random thing that has nothing to do with what you're here for.
For example, as many house story time, then a book about a dog, and every kid said, oh. Alright, what I'm gonna suggest is that people would just take five minutes to the next month. Uh you know, cross off the ones you think don't, don't apply, like dog stories, um or, or vice versa. Look, highlight the ones that you really want, and then let's, we'll come to it. I'll list next month. You can send this me in advance. Okay. Alright, so next up is the New York State report, which is long.
Yeah, God bless you. I was trying really hard to like read it all, and it was just. Yeah, the format is, yeah.
It's not this format when you do it online.
When you save it or.
Certain, yeah. Finding in the section, so you, you got little small chunks at a time. But so it's.
I had one little piddly thing, which is uh we have a yes for having an internet use policy. We don't have an approved one yet, but we're in the midst of it. So maybe you're thinking by the time.
That's what I was thinking.
Okay.
We have one, it's just not approved.
I had a question, so uh other, other, in the library, it's like the stuff, what number is it? Two point one three. Yeah, I was just curious why.
I don't know where she.
Like the numbers. Drop.
Page six.
Here. And then like the audio was, like, I'm just wondering, like, video download, they look funny or.
Those are all under. Uh I think it has to do with how they record the actual content and who was one of the issues, because of how, how it was calculated. So at one point, um the electronic, the ebooks, we had um I think they counted about that, like, ridiculous, three hundred thousand or something. I just put a note in there because it was like, oh, well, we changed the way we're accounting. And then they said, oh, no, let's go back to this. So I just get those numbers and put them in. So the other stuff, though, is all ours.
It's more common, I suppose, under. I think it's three point one seven secrets program sections and. So wow, they jump in our number of secret programs and I mean, it's number ten, even everything, so just.
And also they jump in on website visits.
Yes.
Huge jump.
A huge jump on the website visits. I was surprised by that too.
So that's probably because it's a lot easier to manage and useful.
That's what I was thinking too. Um I think I put that in my comments as well, because whenever the numbers are huge jumps, um you have to give an explanation. So the state just come back and say, well, what's, why is this here, right? Um and I noticed for the secret program for the attendance, all of that stuff is higher because it can have a separate, and they have one more there. Normal and true to me, yeah. So, awesome January.
So if you compare that stuff to like two thousand nineteen, is there not as much?
I have to look.
Yeah.
I'm sure. I can't remember where. That'd be interesting to see. Actually, it would probably be twenty eighteen where we would be on. And this early literacy program story.
I had a question. Have we ever, and maybe we don't have it because there's no need in the community, I don't know, but have we ever had any sort of reading literacy type stuff for adults?
Um I haven't done any. Uh I think we're, I had tried to, but not being able to.
Can we do something for mega workers?
Yeah, there was some kind of a grant that is that um but that was with that, well, yeah, I read all that. Yeah, I I haven't seen a lot of people asking for that. So I haven't really gone there, but I can definitely be looking to stuff, see if there's anything.
I wonder if there might be something, it wouldn't necessarily be literacy, like you have an issue and an inability to read, but how to read to your children to keep them engaged.
Did have a woman and she was, I think it was me and Tyler. She did a series of things. She was from um um what's the free preschool head start? And she did a series about um introducing literacy to your toddler in preschool. And it was very informative, except she was a horrible presenter. It was just very.
And it was here?
It was here, yeah.
Recently?
No. Over ten years ago.
Because it seems like that, especially with a lot of people homeschooling kids and because of book banings and everything, it might be really worthwhile to try to do something like that. I don't know if there's an appetite for it, but it seems like.
I don't know. It's still around. It used to be babies need books. That was like the, the like go to free lesson plans and stuff. I used to do it all the time at Troy.
We are actually, I did want to start doing, um there's a uh program that people are doing a thousand books before kindergarten.
Oh, yeah.
And I'd love to get that going. And if I could get that going, then let's see if I can get somebody from Head Start.
Yeah, this was just like a workshop on how to integrate like literacy and how important talking to your toddler is, and you know, very early literacy.
Yeah, I'd also like to see, you know, we have literacy volunteers come in or but again, I'm just not sure.
I'd find anybody other than literacy volunteers. They, they're tough. They.
Uh four point one nine, the reference. That was a big difference. Is that just, I noticed the way we're counting for was different between two years. Yeah, it's um the year before was um a.
Does annual count?
Yeah, so the way they ask you to do it is to either do an annual account or a estimated account, or so basically take a year, a couple of weeks during the year. Or so basically take a year, a couple of weeks during the year, signify that it's busy. And last year I indicated it and I overestimated the accounts in the annual account. So this year, but it's a new practice that. We are now instead of just doing some of the staff, you track up the patrons who come into the library every day, have the numbers. All right, everybody. So, but now we're going to be keeping track of the thing that the state also asks for how many tool computer usage over the year. Records questions and. Whatever it is that is now. Was that you're tracking each one? We're tracking each one every day. So I'll have actual numbers at the end of each year. Awesome. So, okay, actually. Uh, yeah. So.
I wish we could just. We should be just buy a camp calendar that like had all those categories to just do hash marks under like for every, like every page a day. You just flip it and it's right there and.
This works pretty well with the, um, we have. I now have it with, you know, calls, patrons, using computers, reference questions, their programs, and they keep track of everything that's going on for the day. So it works out really well. So yeah, that's that's for that one.
We have two minutes left in the state report.
Nine point nine is ten. I was wondering why our internet. Which better works. Uh, I don't know why it changed for worse because I did the, um, I ran tests on it. And those are the numbers that came up. So I don't know if it's gone down or what. Is it? What is the number here? Nine point nine nine one two. I know there was less. So actually, I can. Reach out the. Was it many? Yeah. Terms all correct to me. Uh, trusting terms. Did people check to see? Um, so this is this is for last year for in terms of training, right? Yeah, as in two thousand and two. So we had the following trustees completed training in that year, meaning Scott, Sarah. And that's it. But I think other people did trustee trainings in two thousand twenty two.
I did.
Patty might help. But I'm not positive.
Technically, it doesn't really, this is not just like, yeah, it's just getting ready.
The next year. And I did start tracking that on the little trustee. And I think I think that was my nice. Any else studying as we're going?
I wasn't going to do the immediate noise.
It goes red. Hear the orchestra.
So there you just need a motion for it. Okay.
So make a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve. Second.
I'm going to say report all in favor. All right. And then when you're ready, we're up to director's report. I think just started next day and I want to go there. I think we got it on ninety thousand social media. Thank you. See the schedule stuff going on and. Nice variety of pictures and everything. Who am I going? I know it takes so long and I, but it's worth it. We'll have to make that.
What happens when there's the snow day? Cause like you posted that it was a snow day, but then that one, and I saw you post. It's like, can you, once they're scheduled, can you cancel?
I can. I just didn't have internet. So I couldn't.
Really can't then. Yeah.
Oh, so confusing.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, no, no one else is going anywhere. So it didn't matter, but I just, it made me wonder like, what happens?
Yeah, no, you can. I can go in and change it.
Okay. Yeah, you can't do it on a phone. Yeah.
So. Um, so yeah, obviously our knitting crochet was canceled. We had Lego club today and no one showed up for some reason.
Oh, wow.
For us, which so I'm not sure. I'm not sure what happened. Um, upcoming programs, so you can see we have the different things. Um, one thing to really look at is Celtic music with Jeff Snow. He's fantastic. Um, so spread the words so you can get people here. So that would be great.
Is he the one that came before?
He is good. Yeah.
Read his stories as well.
Yeah. Yeah.
Gets people going. So. And then I'll have a new calendar out hopefully by the end of last week. And I am going to put out a newsletter tomorrow to. Just to bring out the upcoming programs. Um, also doing a homeschooling breed. I'd love to see what gets coming on the team night. Um, which also. Yes, we do. I don't know how we're going to do it. It's very hot out there right now. But the, uh, we had quite a few donations come in for the teen night, um, which I think is fantastic. It's been a lot of people are even here. Oh, I'll donate. I'll donate. So we've got. So far. We have. A hundred and fifty dollars and I'm about to win another hundred or another two one or excuse me, fifty dollars to the bank tomorrow. So we've got two hundred dollars so far. Don't be.
People age get rid of their.
In this team, they're not. Well, no, wait. Yes. A few people who have teenagers have been donating. Not everybody. I did put something on the newspaper. So, you know, I tried to get them to actually put a couple of these pictures in. It didn't get along. I was hoping they could. Um, I saw. Cause I didn't do fundraising apartment, but then I did see tonight I double checked square and I saw there was a donation in there. Oh, I didn't see that. And so a hundred dollars between night. Oh, fantastic. So I'll do a thank you for that. Yes, others. Is there another anyone? I have two more. Yeah, I have something. I gave that to you before we leave.
Thanks for your question, though, Scott. I think when people think that they can do a manageable amount, like fifty bucks isn't a huge amount. And it's for a specific thing, like I paid for. Teenage on a night. I think that's appealing.
We're having the Easter parties coming up and also the news base with Facebook posts about the. The raffle, which we've already got. We already made two hundred dollars off of that so far.
From the bagel brunch or beyond?
And beyond. Okay, so our numbers are still good. We've had quite a few people coming to our different programs. Again, one of the bits of teen night. Um, the sun catcher program went really well. We had nine hits and six adults. We are still having very, very active, um, story times. Um, and Rebecca has thankfully said she will help with that. And I think that when I told Cheryl that she was extremely appreciative. So. I think that maybe we can meet sometime and talk about, cause she, the idea of splitting the kids, because we have a huge range of children right now. Toddlers who can't sit still and we've got the older kids who can still.
And who want the whole story. Yeah.
Yeah. So separating them. So we can come up with a good plan. She's still enjoying it, uh, but it was, we had three crying toddlers. I once yesterday on last Wednesday and that was challenging. But. Circulation collection or excuse me, circulation one is about the same again. Our visits went up dramatically this month. I don't know if you saw that, but we went from three hundred and seventy six to five hundred and sixteen in February. So. That. The one thing I realized is that I'm not putting in new patrons, how many new patrons. And I think we have certain, that's my report of how many patrons were registered during each month because that's a good thing to see. You see everything from collection development. Um, so there's. Attended this onboard meeting on February the twentieth. Um, and I told them that we're also looking for people to sponsor teen night. They were happy with that. This, we received, um, our, I received an email from our assembly and it's not ended. Um, and he had said in this email that he had submitted a letter to the assembly speaker asking for a hundred thousand dollars in funding for SNL. And, um.
He doesn't.
No, no, not at all. Cause he asked for that for all the Redford County libraries that are.
The way table money works.
No. So Timberg had a conversation with him and. It helped him to understand what, how this all works. So if anyone ever hears that, oh, I heard you guys got a letter. It's been dealt with and we appreciate his support and as it would be great if that was. We're not going to submit that money. Um, the DA met libraries, library advocacy day one. Well, I did not attend it because of the storm. So that was not, uh, another thing that's going to be going out is our reciprocal lending agreement for e-content. Um, we have a, basically what it is, is that you. Our patrons have access to materials in the Mid Hudson Library System if it's not on hold. And if it's not being requested, or excuse me, if it's obviously not already taken out or there's kind of a. Grammar on it. That makes it sort of only they can have it. But basically any books that are on the shelf, sort of, you know, the e-shelf. Our patrons have complete access to it. So. And we are now going in, not just we have Mid Hudson, we are now going to be a part of Southern Adirondack Library System and you will have valid libraries as well. So our patrons have access to four different library systems where the material. So. Is that all access the same way as all? Yep. And. In Libby, it'll show that there are different library systems. You just click on the library system you want to try and. Go through and so it would work pretty well. That's the other thing I'm going to be doing is that we are. Overdrives being sunset except for people who are on Kindle fires. Um, and everyone's going to be, you're going to have to choose to move to Libby. So I'm going to. At some point. So that'll either with just the staff so you can teach people or. Uh, the expedition back launching an iPhone third. They've got some growth in materials already. It's one of the few. Driver's licenses are no longer going to be put on new patron records. We used to use driver's licenses, but there's no reason to have them. So. That's going to take it off. I, we just stopped using driver's license a long time ago, but now the DA is making a motion. It's going to be throughout the system. Oh, I already did that one. And the training, um, need openly on March fourth because of the snowstorm. And this annual report was submitted on February twenty eighth to DLD. And we got. I think that's the only downside of that because my. Things happen over the week. So if I get either a report on Friday, you know, or, you know, there's still their stuff. I was just like, we were exposed. After this story. So I think that's pretty much it. And the pictures are from. The stained glass.
And there's one minute.
See.
On, we have this statement that I sent out, which is the current bank balances. Uh, shows that we did get the ninety five thousand dollars from the town. The February profit and loss also reflects that input. Other than that. Sorry they were late. Kim and I are trying to figure out our schedules.
Should I have a quick question for you? A follow up window I had from last month.
I'll try.
Not sure. So. And I, is my note correct that the money market savings?
Yes.
Good interest.
Yeah, we should, but we should transfer the money from, I didn't know when Kim was going to do, did she want me to do that or not? I mean, it looked made that made sense to take the ninety five thousand and schlepp it into the business savings account. Because we do get interest on that.
We wanted to go to the month market. The business savings is the one that is, it doesn't get as good as that one. It's the one that you just took about three thousand and in case you're an overdraft.
Okay.
But the money market is the one that's supposed to be the name.
How much do you want me to transfer?
And there's no restrictions on how often.
No, between those accounts and the money market is liquid. I mean, it's not like it's, you know, takes like ten days or anything.
Probably put it all in there and just.
The transfer.
Transfer as needed. Yeah.
These are whatever feasible originally for in terms of. That's the next month or whatever.
Right. Yeah.
That makes sense. And then does a special projects savings for an interest?
Nothing I'm aware of.
But the money market's best. It seems to be very least, uh, well, only five dollars and just seventy six cents in February for the special projects. So it actually is about six dollars and thirty eight cents. So you're one point four.
So for year to date, the money market has made seventy dollars and seventy nine cents. The scholarship has twenty four dollars. Even the checking has some interest. But I don't see any interest for the money of for the business saving. Maybe that doesn't have any.
The business savings I.
I just don't see any, any interest listed in. Quick book.
Twenty seven cents.
Okay.
I think that that gets combined when I do the report.
Oh, does it? Okay. Yeah. So maybe if you all want to do a motion for us to move. You know, ninety five thousand into the money market regular savings. I can do that pretty quickly. And that would leave us eight, eight thousand and change in the checking account. Are you comfortable with that amount?
And you have to sort of move it on every couple of.
Yeah, we move it quite often and we're, when we're always moving, we are the loan account. We have to pay that on a monthly basis. That's a credit card.
I'll make a motion that we move the ninety five thousand into the working checking account.
A second.
So that's the money market regular savings fifty three hundred there. All right. We'll do it first thing in the morning.
Is it easy to achieve a form print format on our weekly reports? I don't know. Um, you know what I mean? It's like, you're talking hairs on two pages. So the figure in total separate from the other lines. And so I'm wondering if we can just get that so we can see it on the.
Yeah, you have to kind of, if you date, when you export them, you can export them as either PDF or an Excel spreadsheet. If you export it as a spreadsheet, then you can play with them a little bit. If, when you export them as a PDF, you're locked in.
Okay. It looks like also it should be exported in a portrait instead of.
Sometimes it's better in landscape because then there you can put them all on one page.
Well, but that's what this looks like if. If there's a lot of room this way, but it ran out going up and down. So if you did it portrait.
Or you can also make it smaller too.
Yeah, you still have to make it a little bit smaller, but if it was portrait. It would be easier because you're already wasting.
I can just start sharing them as.
Yeah, if you just, I mean, when we sit down, Kim, we can meet for a while and.
Yeah.
We can meet for a while and just say, okay, fine. We'll do these all Excel spreadsheets. That way we can play with them a lot more. We can meet for a while and just say, okay, fine, we'll do these all Excel spreadsheets, that way we can play with them a lot more.
That's time on treasure. I thought, I figured you saw the red.
Saw it, I saw green.
So, active community reports, I think we just. I can use rack at this moment, uh, so fundraising, like I said, it's a, I thought there was nothing, you know, I assume you have that on some T night. Um, donations which you mentioned, and raffle. So there is a little bit of activity there. Um, I, as I mentioned in the last couple meetings, we are, you know, we approved to move to that Elio. System, and I was just waiting because I'm not going to be doing and paying for it sooner than we need it. Um, but as we're starting to also get more people like from the, um. The branch people sign up, you know, they're interested in volunteer opportunity, or they're interested in that, and I reshuffle people based on how much they know. Um, I'm, I'm, I'm inclined to think that maybe not wait too much longer, I start to. Get this data and inwards, I think there's a lot that we can.
There is, there is, I've been in it since the Pittsfield Book Sale, I've been in it like the last two days, eight hours a day playing. You know, updating memberships and all this good stuff, and so I'm doing, you know, there are donors, there's volunteer. And there's contacts and everything, so if you put all your contacts in, then you can start populating things.
Yeah, I think that would be awesome. It's gonna take some time, but.
Well, I'll be more, I'll be more than happy to do the data entry because they're the, once you get used to it.
Okay, cool.
I even let you use my password to think that have all the Pittsfield stuff.
Still steel library. Do we charge if people, like, say someone from Hancock wants a card?
No, they just have the.
I used to pay forty bucks a year to have a North Adams card.
It'd cost me twenty-five in Pittsfield.
Um, but it would be in our system, so they could only take things out of our library.
Um, building in ground, it's. Can we get a bid on the roof?
I, I told Kirk that he should get in touch with you to check it out, it wasn't so much to get a bid as to see. How long it, he thought it'll be good for, um, he never contacted you, I'll remind him again, I'll see him tomorrow.
Okay.
I mean, he may not want to do, you know, it, it may be one of those things where he's not.
And we have to be extended enough.
Is that a BS detector? One of my offices went off all the time.
Um. We have an unofficial committee now, um, um, Mary Trev and Jo Claire. Who have taken pity on me, um, complaining about. Um, step into the advisory and talk about what we need to do and. Proving and what we need to do now, so, um, I'm very grateful for them for that, so we'll have a little assistance to get that going. He used to be whiny sometimes. Any else on building grounds?
We just had getting just the one bit on the roof.
It wasn't so much a bit, it was really.
Well, that was all part and parcel of the whole.
Well, here's, uh, here's the issue.
Yeah, okay.
We've got an aging plant. We had architects and engineers look at it, provided information in the master plan to give it. There are useful lights, lives for these systems being given. But. Uh, my experience is that those estimates are highly unreliable. I mean, people will basically give you conservative estimates, say you've got like X years for your boiler. This plant is literally a house, it's really known as. And the expectation that system's going to fail in a certain amount of time. Often is just not the case, so in terms of planning. I mean, you need to be mindful that you've got aging systems, obviously, it's part of maintenance. To be maintained, and you need to be mindful of, at some point. But in connection with master plan, and to the extent that we undergo any additional, we decide to seek a grant, expense some money. It needs to be balanced against knowing and understanding what your, your need to like. Please improve the plan. So this was sort of, uh, we got a very high estimate, we need the. It's starting roof replacement on the old side of the building. I think Sarah said, do we really need to have a start to improve? And the answer is, well, not really, but it would be nice. But the issue is that you need to. The usual adorable shingle. As opposed to a very high-end, which may last fifty years, but costs. And so this was just really sort of soft and rude in connection with the roof. In connection with sort of making decisions of, okay, do we want to do something with a capital improvement and when? But that's sort of.
So I asked Kirk if he could come and just check the roof to see how. Long he thinks it looks like it has before something really needs to be done, because we also wanted to see if we could. Phase it in such a way that, um, we, we don't have to pay for it in, until a few years hence, so we're not spending our money on that.
Um, just so you know, I was, I've been doing the note, we're going through and fundraising all our, um, just our minutes and eighty minutes and, um. I did find that the million minutes from two thousand and eight, that's so the tin roof needs to be replaced. It is saying how long we thought it meant, but. So I don't know, um, maybe they moved on, I don't know, it's great that they were, but. You still get hurt.
Yeah, we'll do it. Thank, thank you for that explanation.
And who's Kirk?
Kirk Mitchell, he's, he does, oh, actually does all the, the links, we're like a groundskeeping, but he also does small projects.
And he also arranges all of the pickleball events, oh, so he's an important person.
There's a conflict of interest there.
Okay, Brian, the emergency.
Okay, um, the main things are the pro, uh, the program survey, I don't know, it, yeah, yeah. So the test data has been cleared out, it's ready to send out to the contact list, um. And I will write a report once the data is. Um. Ellen Cole actually did have to pull her focus group, um, there are only four people here, but it was really fun, I, I, I stayed for it and. It's, it was women in their eighties and nineties, and they were asked three questions, what are your joys, what are your challenges? And what would you tell to the next generation now that you've reached this age? And it was very difficult to get these people off their joys. Visit over, did I mean, I felt so optimistic by the end of it, it was really, really nice. Yeah, so the only follow-ups that we have are they're, they're gonna be writing up a report, not just on that focus group, but on the other focus groups that they're doing. They will send their report to the library, and we should distribute the report to the four people, it was, um. Uh, what's her name, Lisa Wheeler, um, Audrey, do you know who Audrey is? Ronnie and Pat, I love my.
I don't know who it is, no. There's someone outside with.
Yeah.
Given their age, just distributing to them in paper copies.
Probably, um. Although, I don't know, they, they send computer stuff, they seem pretty patty's on, um, Facebook.
Yeah.
But it was really, it was great, my goal was really good, yeah, um, and then, uh, we've already covered it, but we did have the cabin. Fever bagel brunch, and it was, I thought it was really well attended and, uh. People from different walks of life were really mingling, I noticed that a lot, and, uh, Jen was working the crowd. Volunteer opportunities and, and the raffle was doing well, and it was, it was really fun, it was, it was a good day. That's it for me.
Any other question? And thank you for everybody who solicited. Uh, raffle donations in advance of that, and anybody who contributed. But yeah, let's, we would think. I think we need to do more of. Because it serves several different purposes, um, well, so.
We have drawn.
At Easter, at the Easter party. So next up is recruitment, and I'll just tail in, um, or, and we'll just continue on, on the brunch. The people who attended, um, almost everybody checked out, they're interested in learning more about volunteer opportunities, and it's like, hey, can you mail them? So we can add people to the email list as well, which I would give that list to you. Um, but there were definitely. Um, a couple of potential. Board members, um, may take a little longer than right now to get them on, but, um, one woman, Rachel Fisher, uh. She might be a good potential person for our community committee, and or even might be interested in camp related. She is a special education teacher in Lebanon, so it'd also be nice to get them. She's really nice, um, relatively new here, been in school for two years, I think, when you're.
At the elementary school?
No, not. No, not, no, elementary school is all the way over, she works at a high school. Yeah.
Not possible. Um, we're moving to Lebanon, kids go to elementary.
All the way over to Hatch. The other, the other side, the speedway, so I don't count it as part of the.
I wonder where it is.
Yeah. Yeah, it's, it's, it's a speed, it's, it's where the speed track.
So she's a potential, and so, okay, we've got, what I wanted to do is follow up with her, I was hoping for Patty's. Broccoli salad recipe to sweeten the meal, but I'm just getting on her and, um, happy. Would you come over here, that's okay, I had to say, interested in learning more about the community, um. Uh, Mary Trev, the unofficial committee, but also would be interested in doing things that don't involve like, um. Travel and such, um, and then there's our, here, um. Diane Tuckman and Rich, Rick K, um. They are potentially interested in volunteering more in various. The aspects of town organizations, but both like good potential, so I'm going to be following up with them as well. Um.
What were their names? I'm sorry.
Uh, Diane Tuckman, T U K M A N. Rick with K, R I K. And the last name K, K A Y E. Um, we had several people from the new resident that attended, so we're keeping them engaged, and then, um, Vicky and, um. Jo Claire managed to, uh, twist. Yeah, man, his arm, then do some card programming, so, so it really was a good opportunity to get a lot of different connections made. I'm just gonna try and convince you to give me two card, one beginner and one advanced, so we'll see if that works. So, anyway, um, does anybody else have any other potential, um? Or number recruits to, that we should be following up with? Any other interests?
Still have to make a couple of phone calls.
There might be some parents from somewhere that I might reach out to. Got a couple of mine, we'll see. All right.
Uh, Easter parties planned for April eighth, we have the seventh for rain date. And, um. Sorry, I was just. Strapped to the time.
Um.
Uh, we had a planning meeting, and so we're reaching out to volunteers now and arranging everything. Um, I was, would like to ask the board to donate water to the party.
Like just bottles of water?
Yeah, you can do that.
We usually have like a hundred and fifty.
I forget, two cases?
That's great, thank you. The small bottles. Awesome, thank you.
And I'll have to drop it off early, we're gonna be away the week before that, and through then, so I'll drop it off.
Um, the only other news was that Jessica is gonna come back as the rap dancer after, which is great. Very, very, very excited. I am waiting to hear back from Taylor, she's. On the fence, but she is not saying no, she just needs a little more time to explore some other. Opportunities that might be a little more financially. Helpful for her since she's, you know, in grad school, um. But anyway, so she's gonna let me know by the end of March, and she's not that far away, and then. Depending what she says, we'll start advertising to hire.
Besides advertising, is there anybody else in the pipeline that, uh, people that know of or anything?
No, um. Rebecca and I had talked about just wanting to open it up, that's like an application that is for anybody who to apply rather than. Trying to find people within the.
Right, right.
Maybe probably ask Jessica, do you know any other teachers, and then ask them to apply, we just don't want to make it a.
But we haven't done, I, sure, I was waiting to hear from Taylor before we start. Um, doing that, but, yeah, so we'll see. How that goes, and that.
Um, I, I was as far as teammate goes, um, unfortunately, the school just moved their middle school dancer. And their high school dance to March thirty-first.
Um, that's so wrong.
What is March thirty-first, I can't remember, March thirty-first, teammate. Um, so we might need to look, I don't want to compete with them.
No, no, we can't.
Um, either doing it.
We can't do the twenty-fourth.
I'm not here the twenty-fourth. Um.
That's why I, the website says teenage seventeen.
I know.
Just today, they moved it.
Okay, yeah.
Oh, teenage is a seven. And the dance was originally the seventeen. The dance was supposed to be Friday. Um.
So.
So, I mean, we could do it, you and I can have tomorrow, we'll figure that out, but, um. We could do it Friday.
Yeah, that would work. We'll just be here all day, there's a rain date.
No, I know we can do it.
Especially since you're getting donations for it.
Another Friday. On February break. But I can believe.
Any others? The old business, um. Um, Republic is here. New business, anybody having a new business?
Um, just that New Lebanon's having a book sale in June, uh, they'll start accepting donations. On April the fifteenth at Church of Our Savior. They'll be accepting donations on Saturday, the three Saturdays in April, fifteenth, twenty-second, twenty-ninth. And then it'll be a Wednesday, Saturday, all during May.
Do they want reference codes?
I've seen your reference. You know, I, I can't say, I don't know, we sell, I mean, we just finished with Pittsfield and. We were selling shit that I thought we never sold. And had, we had the complete Catholic diocese of Western Massachusetts, and someone said, oh, I, I've always been looking. No idea what people are looking for. Yeah, that sale made seventeen thousand dollars. And killed us all, but we're, they're covering. But, uh, I mean, no, but I mean, we could put signs up here for donations and. Uh, there's gonna be a book sale and then tours of the church as well. So it's gonna be kind of a neat, a neat co, co-event between the church and the library, so.
Very nice.
Be a nice, nice way to do it. And if you want to get rid of these, we'll be more than happy to. Well, you're gonna need to put these in your rotating in your, the thing that fell down, you were gonna have.
We do, we we circulate, Jody does all of the book sale stuff, so she circulates them, you know.
Out, out to the, like, because.
Yeah, we just have to find a big place for them.
Okay.
A little library, which happened. That was only Amanda's job, right? Well, her, she.
And she's in Albany.
I don't know. I think she's wanting home when the they mail them. There was yet again another comment on Facebook about it.
Yeah.
How many people are into.
Yeah.
Um, and I did post the link.
I think somebody's saying, why isn't that back up? Well. Totally appropriate.
That's all.
She isn't going to be able to. Yeah, fix it, do it, whatever. We we need to come up with a plan B. I'll I'll go recall and.
What did they, did you check with her or parents?
Uh, I only heard from her just saying that it was gonna cost funding to. Um, reinstall and fix it. So they weren't too sure. They had to see if they could get that with this funding. So.
We need Eagle Scout.
I haven't heard many Eagle Scouts recently, but.
Actually, they have to be environmental now anyways. Afterwards, the environmental stuff.
Um, I was wondering if we wanted to try and schedule a spring cleanup. Day or two where volunteers and board members volunteer to help do some cleanup. Inside, um, and some outside stuff, but. You know, maybe after the, you know, before or after the Easter party is better, but. To get upstairs, get some upstairs. You know, to bring down Easter stuff, we need to bring up Easter stuff. Um, do you have a plan, um, as able to to help? To get things in.
When are we doing that thing with the Cristo in the little shed?
Must be a new form of pickleball.
And then everything else.
I don't know, makes sense.
I feel like mid-May or something. Early May.
In May, yeah.
Um, are any of you can chat about that stuff?
Yes. Yeah, and in the shed, I think there's a lot of camp stuff.
There's a couple of chairs and so. Oh, yeah. I don't think there's that much. Uh, in the shed.
That means the Crisco, yeah.
Uh, correspondence, there was no correspondence, uh, aside from my active support as a gay, so people would have a link to click through the support.
And when you do that at the bottom, it also gives you the opportunity to share it on Facebook and Instagram and stuff too. And make sure you delete the part that says insert here. I hate when they put those in those kinds of letters because people always just.
All right, uh, anything else? Otherwise, we are gonna be adjourned early.
This timekeeping is. I was thinking maybe like a flag would be nice. I'm not kidding. Something like that, because I think it's uncomfortable to interrupt. Uncomfortable for me to interrupt, so somebody's right in the middle of a sentence when it's one minute. I would rather just.
We have jingly bells that.
That seems even ruder.
Maybe just like a red post.
Let's throw a ball at them.
Well, thank you for efficient leaving everybody and um. Please take the floor, build it up.